Can you hear all that fan noise? Usually means an update is gonna...
I updated it this morning. There's still an update of West Kentucky can't get it to go through.
Okay.
Tony turned it on too. He's definitely saving it up.
Yeah, when you and Mr. Dugger were... I wasn't anticipating it. It was a guy that stopped with his...
And that's what I did.
That's a pretty good excuse.
Something happened with the phone.
Okay, we're now live.
Well, it's not a young group over there.
You're kidding.
I know. Yeah, so whatever happened. But I gotta say, they got it after.
So you just...
I think it was very... It was not different.
Did anybody send out the agenda for the hearing? Or is there...
And it was like, okay, then we've got their relations together at the same time. You know, you ran into Peter. Yes, with one or two people come back. Yeah.
Because public hearing for home...
Yeah. It makes sense. Yeah. Pretty much get out, right? Your kids are there for the bad day. Yeah, yeah. There's where you find some of the younger people.
Yeah, I tried to... I tried not to...
Somebody came over. And his wife's going to his mom's death. Or some spells are made some dog.
Ten days in jail.
Okay.
I can do the original website.
So he's gonna do it when that gets...
He won't go without sale right here.
He didn't understand that he needed... That he may get an authorization to do it.
Oh, that's true. Okay, thanks.
Does he have a different...
So he had two emails that he says to use the one...
Was he here in attorney?
It's a good cause to go down immediately.
That's right. No, no.
I know.
Okay, we got seven o'clock. We've got all meeting to order and pledge allegiance.
To the republic of which is Satan's. One nation under our individual for the living and justice all.
Okay, this is a special public hearing. There's no need for roll call. Requirement for form of this is just us calling this meeting to order. This is for the appropriation ordinance, which the board will be considering for approval later this evening. The state of Illinois requires us to operate under an appropriation ordinance and not a budget. The village of Sleepy Hollow, however, has elected to operate under a budget, but we are still required by the state statutes to file appropriation ordinance each year. What we do is simply take our budget. We increase the line items three or four percent for contingencies, and that's our appropriation. This meeting was done according to ordinances. Publication of notice is on file. Which was placed out no less than 15 days and no more than 30 days in the local newspaper and the... What's the M-I-N-L?
Not high and low. The public notice sign.
Public notice sign. So those requirements have been met. Is there anyone here from the public that has a question on the appropriation? I will say, one interesting thing about the appropriations is the limit that we can spend by law within a fiscal year. But there's no accounting for rents. Just expenses. But it's very interesting days of work. We had all these expenses, but...
Can I just ask you? Sure, okay. I don't know what the protocol is. This is the first year that this is being done this way?
No, this is done every...
It's every year.
The appropriation budget, okay. I didn't know if that was a new rule or something.
No, it's an old, old one. As I said, we operate with the budget that we renew each spring. And the state says, that's fine, but you have to, you know, tell us the maximum that you're going to spend on the appropriation.
So all those line items and what was posted online, those are the max. I see.
Right. Do you move around? Or is it based to a bottom line only?
We can't go more than 10% over the total for the fund. So if we go over in one line item, as long as we don't go over all of them, we're okay.
But, yeah, we can, if we need to, go in and say, okay, we weren't spending this money in this department. We want it over here. We can make an ordinance change and transfer it that way. But it's not something we wanted to do.
If, you know, if something happened that was, that we didn't anticipate, we can go back and redo the appropriation. And say, well, we now have this project that we didn't know that, you know, a big sinkhole that hasn't been fixed, you know? We didn't know about it at that time. Exceeds our appropriation, therefore, we're redoing the appropriation.
So I assume the purpose is just so they can be an oversight to...
Yes.
But do they validate the numbers?
Yes, yes. It is part of the... We need the audit process.
Well, you said you kind of bump, give yourself a three or four percent bump on the line items and totals. What if you gave yourself a 15%?
It's fine. We can wait.
You try not to box yourself in as far as the sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we also have a line item in the appropriation for contingencies that is not in the budget. So we're well above on the appropriation that is going to cover, you know, anything that we anticipate.
Thank you.
Chair thing. Public hearing for the appropriation. Discussing some of the finer points of appropriation versus...
Well, we need this information too. Is that... They're not interested in revenue.
So what happens is that we do have to report our revenue account, and we do that as the budget. So they get the revenue figures to our budget, and then I also send them the appropriation for the expenses.
They got a...
Yeah.
The controller with the state gets it, the county gets it.
Okay.
And so then it's also part of the...
We can choose to do everything as a budget, but this is just easier doing it this way as appropriation. It gives us more flexibility.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? This has been the most excitement we've had on a public hearing in appropriation. Usually people look at the notice and they go, I don't know what this is about. They just don't show up.
This is the first time we've... I've had people since I've been doing it.
You're getting... Old people with time now.
Right.
Heck, I would have brought donuts if I knew people were getting out.
I did her on time.
Yeah.
Well, if there's no other new business, no other comments regarding the appropriations, then we will call this meeting adjourned. Public hearing adjourned. Thank you all.
I just... I just...
Okay.
So... With those people there. Yeah.
I remember Steve saying that it had never happened before, they'd never seen it.
It's like, oh, he looks like, he looks like he wants to go down the channel.
Next we think of El Dorado.
Away here.
Yeah.
Try to trip that because if they can add some even.
Like in all.
He doesn't care. Actually, no, this was taken.
She was starting getting the place. Actually about six or five months ago. Then the festival again. You know, my brother, he gave her a baby. He'll hurt that he'll hurt him. Show her face and it was just. But now with the light is starting to come in, I was like.
Okay, so it calls me borders and my agents.
What do we do?
To reply, the United States of America to two our voting for which stands one nation under God and without sin. With no justice.
All the call first, Ms. Gaddally.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Harney.
Here.
Ms. McGuire. Mr. Thor.
Here.
Ms. Bow.
Here.
You have a question, Mr. President. We've got a quarrel of five with our trustee that is missing. There's a request to attend via Zoom. We could have a motion to so approve the request.
I move.
Second.
Moved by both, seconded by Thor to approve the request to attend remotely. Any final questions or discussion?
Put the reason in the minutes.
Um, she's, she's not gonna be calling in.
She's not calling in?
No.
Well, we still got the motion on the floor.
I, I just.
Withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is withdrawn. Okay. All right, well, that takes that off the agenda, moves us down to the next item. That is the minutes of the meeting of April twenty fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. So. Seconded by Thor to approve the minutes of, uh, April, I mean, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Any corrections, additions to the notes? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion so carries, thank you all. Okay, the next one is the president's report and the civility pledge. Uh, let's see. Mr. R, have you read the civility pledge?
I have not. But then.
I appreciate.
In the interest of civility, I pledge the most building by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all here servicing to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that.
Grab a. Right off the Shakespeare. Theater in the round.
It's good. I know.
Okay, the, uh, next item, the, oh. Appropriation ordinance, you want to take care of that through your. Okay, we can take care of that. Uh, the next thing, this is beginning to sort of feel like the first of the year. Uh, so fiscal year twenty twenty-five started May first. We had May Day, we had Beltania, we had Derby Day, and we've got a new budget going forward. And in that new budget, we also have effective with the May payroll, the new pay rates for the employees. So that takes place. The other item I need to mention with the beginning of the new year is vehicle stickers and pep tags. They were due May first. If you don't have it by now, there's a late fee. There will be a late fee through August, at which time we will send out a ticket. And you will have to pay the ticket and the sticker. The late fee is only five dollars a month, so that's a bargain.
Per vehicle per month.
Five dollars per vehicle is over. Okay, and the cost of the ticket is a lot more, I can tell you that. Uh, okay, let's see. Uh, we've got all that taken care of. Uh, there is one other couple items. Uh, recently, we had two new retail establishments open in our little strip mall. Lucky Lady the Third, a video gaming operations up there, and also it's Sunshine Liquor. Okay. Which both of them are brand new, opened just about two or three weeks ago. They're scheduled for a grand opening at Sunshine Liquor on May twenty-fourth. It's a Friday morning. They'll have their grand opening. Uh, with all that activity going up there, it has drawn some attention. And Mr. Hoff and I have been talking about it. Uh, the first overall appearance up there is kind of shabby. They put up various items for signage that they've not taken care of, they've not cleaned up, they've not repaired. We've got that vacant lot that's for sale, it's got a sign that's sits out in the middle with vegetation going around it. Uh, and so Bill and I are going to reach out to the property owners and the business owners and just have a sit down with them as to the codes, the signage codes and the building codes that we in the village have. Because that reflects upon the overall thing, and we've got residents that live behind it. They've got, you know, some damage to that fence back there that needs to be repaired also. So those are the kind of little things that Bill and I, as our economic development liaison, will be sitting down with them in the next couple, two or three weeks and talking about. And just yet, we want to give them as much support as possible, but, you know, it needs to be a give and take. They need to kind of keep their image cleaned up, and if they want to put feather signs up, uh, maybe we can come to some kind of agreement with them on that, as long as they keep them clean and neat and not let anyone go to disrepair it. Just leave up like tattered cloth hanging out in the wind. So, uh, that's one of the items. Uh, the last thing I want to do and comment on is the survey. Eugene got that out to all the members of the board this past week. Uh, there's ways a lot of questions there, a lot of comments to go through. Um, but probably the next meeting we'll start taking a look at that survey and seeing just what all. I mean, the first blush of it, it looks like we are where we're supposed to be. Right down the middle of the road. And as A and B Baby said, you can please some of the people all the time and all the people some of the time, but not all the people all the time. And it looks like that's pretty much where we sit. So we'll go over that and we'll be more detailed another date. Uh, okay, I think we've got it to the courts report.
Uh, actually, I have an awesome report to provide, or at least some impressions, and it's a personal thanks to all of the board members. We had one hundred percent compliance by all board members for a timely filing of their statements of economic interest. I thank you, I thank you, I thank you. Now, I've got about three commission people that have yet to file. If you would like their names, I may get back afterwards and I'll give you their names. But to the board members, to a person, thank you all very, very much because I'm the guy, lucky guy that gets to chase all of you if it doesn't work. But this time, everybody was one, everyone was compliant. So the first time in my recent, uh, since I've done, uh, the village, Chuck Clark, uh, we had one hundred percent compliance, so thank you very much. And that, that's it.
That's it? Okay, all right, we go to planning and zoning, if Deppner's not with us this evening. We'll move on to the attorney's report.
No report, Mr. McGee.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Engineers report, Mr. Steele.
A couple items is, your program is hopefully I'll hear back from IDA in the next week and then uh, the next board meeting I'll have scheduledized and everything, and then we're going to get that project rolling. Um, and then later on, I don't know if you want to talk about Annalese Hall Road and your business or with, uh, any preference? Would you like? Oh, it doesn't ask me. Uh, so Kyle has actually been working diligently with me in regards to, uh, along City Hall Road is, as you know, is, there's a drainage issue along the, uh, the west side of the road, basically coming down the hill is from that is that the swell that is actually supposed to be handling that water is very small. It's actually too small for everything that's coming down off around seventy-two. Uh, I've been in contact with IDA in regards to seeing what issues that they can do. Obviously, they require a lot of information from the village before they can actually even touch it. But in the meantime, in order to help, uh, remedy our issue, at least on our property, is to actually, uh, you'll see from the plan is that Ponds Inc. is actually proposed, and I agree with this, uh, plan is to install basically a stormwater system in order to catch the majority of the water coming down that hill. Basically, with this is it'll catch a good majority of the stormwater and it'll actually prevent it from basically rolling alongside the road because that's the main issue that we've had through that area. And also then, tenanted pond alongside the road there itself. Again, one of those issues is the amount of debris that actually starts forming alongside the road and damming everything up. So, uh, basically it is looking for the board to approve the proposal, uh, any questions?
Okay, is this going to pick up? We've got more work to do just north of that, right? On the curve?
Uh, basically, yeah, that takes up a lot of, basically everything around the corner. Is basically regrade it, see, uh, swale it, uh, seed blanket it, or actually get that thing. Uh, the only thing that it doesn't solve is since I believe that it is more private property issue is basically that area that has, uh, been held up by ladder. Um, however, all the work that we're going to be doing is it won't affect any of that. So basically is whatever issues that end up having your solutions that need to happen there is it'll do more affect anything that we do.
Will be prepared for any more water coming down from that if we redo that in the north?
As far as we.
The catch basin you're putting in, will it be big enough to handle?
Yeah, it'll be big enough, and then, uh, basically is the way that it's actually going to be designed is it'll still have that swell capacity and everything. So basically is if that ever becomes clogged up with debris or anything like that, which it shouldn't, as long as we keep it maintained, is it'll be able to hop and actually go through the call over testing system to there.
From the catch basin, is that underground?
Yeah.
Underground?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll still probably have some erosion, especially on big rain events before the catch basin. There's just nothing to stop or flow really. Um, we can try and put some big rip rap in there, but we've done that before and it just washes it right now.
Income start coming down from seventy-two.
That's seventy-two, it's Kensington Drive, it's a, there's a lot of water that comes through there. So I hope, I don't know how fast the state works, but it'll be. Really nice to put a culvert in there across Sleepy Hollow Road because then it could spill into the forest reserve.
Now. So at least they were semi fast on responding to me at least as far as what we have to be. Submit, basically is we have to submit them, uh, kind of a real view of exactly where we believe the water's all coming from and why is it their issue, so.
Invite them to come out someday with some, right?
Exactly what I did. Hey, they go, you want me to be out here? And they're like, oh, no, we can see exactly on plan is it what's going on.
Well, you know. So then on the, uh, what we got on the agenda, the, uh.
This was actually planned for the last couple of years, so we actually put it under the Deco Grand, uh, area there. Except obviously all that kind of got shifted.
I remember that when we did Sleepy Hollow Road, we had bouncing things around and that drainage up at that corn has been one of them. Okay, we have a motion to approve the bid from, uh, Ponds in court in the amount of one thousand?
One thousand?
Yeah, just so you know, to the bid is just for the labor. We would provide the materials and they estimated an extra day of work. It'd probably be four days by their, their best estimate unless they come across some major issue. So it could, and most likely, I mean, twenty thousand, I would set a sign for that, but it should come in at probably uh, sixteen thousand or so for their labor and then the material. I'm not sure what the cost of materials, I'm still waiting for cost estimates for culverts and catch basins and stuff like that, but I wouldn't estimate it over three thousand for materials.
Okay, well, that would be, that's separate from.
Right. It would, yeah.
This is just the way that we're going to deal with it for not to exceed twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Okay? We have a motion, is that's.
A motion.
Kelly and seconded by.
Second.
Thor to approve the bid from Ponds for the drainage work along Sleepy Hollow Road to the north, not to exceed twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Any other comments, questions or discussion?
Um, I just, I don't want to be impertinent, but we just had the, we just purchased the mini excavator recently, which is about swell. This isn't something that we can do, we do need to hire out.
It's too big of a job. It would, it would be, probably take us an entire week, eight hours a day, and I just can't. We're three guys to set, well, we need two for just doing traffic control alone, so it would just be one guy in an excavator, taking the excavator, using the dump truck, it would, it would take us forever.
So it's more efficient to do it, efficient.
I'd love to do it with a mini excavator, but.
So Kyle, have you painted flames on the fenders of the?
Not yet. But yeah, it's just too big of a job for us. And if I had two more guys, that'd be great.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mark, roll call please. Mr. Gaddally.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Bow.
Aye.
Five forty bucks, no negative marks, a motion so carries, thank you all. Okay, anything else, Mr. Steele?
Uh, just within the next week, if so, I'm going to sit down and pile and go over the, uh, pretty much panel for the, uh, hilltop and hill, hill crest, water main.
Okay. All right, congrats, coming up the bike then too.
Yep. Awesome.
All right, fair enough. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Director of Finance, Mr. Dan.
Request a motion for the approval of the accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-two cents.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Harney to approve the accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-two cents. Any additions, deletions, comments or questions?
It's so big because we've got the two cables in there. It's so big because we've got the two cables in there.
Comments, questions, roll call please. Ms. Bow?
Hi.
Mr. Daver?
Hi.
Ms. Thomas?
Hi.
Mr. Thornton?
Hi.
Mr. Hardy?
Hi.
Six affirmative bucks, five affirmative bucks, no negative bucks in motion, so carries, thank you all.
Um, I've heard rumor that, uh, Kyle was taking the excavator home and sleeping in it because he has to make sure that it doesn't get soggy in it. All I saw was a big smile on his face when he, whatever he's in it.
I thought.
He looks like he can't, just can't for my, 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 my.
Okay.
I also wanted to make mention on the survey, there were three hundred and forty-four that were turned in. There were, even though we only had forty-five questions, it came out to be seventy-one questions, so that was, uh, just about twenty-five thousand data points I entered.
Thank you.
And that doesn't include the text comments and the comments where there were no comments requested. So, um, but, you know, yes, as, uh, Mr. Pickett said is, is that, you know, for every person who was strongly for something, there was an equal number against it. And, you know, the middle of the road position that we're taking is, is, is the appropriate one.
Thank you for annotating and putting it all together, so it's all coordinated.
Yeah.
That's really helped to have that all together.
Um, do you want to do appropriation right now?
Sure.
Okay. So, we, we had done the, the budget and, uh, but by all, what we need to do is the appropriation. So, like the motion to approve the appropriation ordinance in the amount of, uh, six million, one hundred and fifty thousand and fifty-three dollars.
So, move?
Second.
Moved by Thornton, seconded by Bow to approve the, the appropriation ordinances, number four, or dash, four, four in the amount of six million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand?
One, one hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-three dollars. Fifty thousand, fifty-three dollars.
Fifty-three dollars. Okay, comments, questions, discussion? We had a public hearing on that early this evening. We had three people in the audience. It's the largest that we've ever had. They're, they're not educated on the appropriation. Okay, no other comments, questions, roll call please. Mr. Hardy?
Hi.
Ms. Thomas?
Hi.
Mr. Natalie?
Hi.
Ms. Bow?
Hi.
Mr. Thornton?
Hi.
Five affirmative bucks, no negative bucks in motion, so carries. Go, well. Anyone else, Eugene?
No, that's all I've got.
Alright, thank you, Eugene. Next item is the comments from the public, Mr. Van.
Yes. I'd like to thank, uh, the board for allowing us to do the McCloud project, uh, got approved from you guys, uh, April fifteenth. I think it was at the last meeting. And, uh, we've got two treatments since. That's starting to take. I know the other day the water was really milky. But it seems to like settle down now. But we got a fine as a launch area though. Uh, last time they're in, uh, they couldn't launch it, it's just too wet. Uh, so they did a shoreline treatment, so we're gonna work on that. Uh, there is a vacant property at three twenty-three sharing that I tried to get a hold of that realtor. Uh, he doesn't call back. Uh, in the interim, I think Bill and I are gonna look at a al- alternate place to, uh, launch that boat. We just need to clear some place out there, so it's not as steep to, uh, get that boat in there. So, thanks for that. Uh, another fantastic note, we had a great, uh, village dinner on, uh, April twenty-seventh. I'm gonna thank again the board that attended, uh, Chief, Steve, Kelly, Ed and Mark, who's still there along with Jennifer. I wanna thank Jennifer, uh, Ann and Kelly for doing the fundraiser auction. We raised over five thousand dollars. They'll go towards the fireworks. So, uh, again, we had a hundred and five people from the village attend. We really had a great evening, right? But thanks again for that. Hopefully, we can make this an angle. And then lastly, we are selling bricks again. Uh, John reminded me it's on the website. Again, all the money, net proceeds for that, if we sell a hundred bricks, we got about eight brand that we can put in towards the, uh, park, uh, playground and the lake. So, uh, please just spread the word to your neighbors, friends, so what, if they don't have a brick in there, or if they bought one twenty years ago, buy another one for their grandkids or whatever. But, uh, we need that support for that as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brad. Glad to hear you had a successful event.
So, thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the trustee report, Wilson Parks, Mr. Hardy.
Um, regarding roads, a thank you to Bill Hoff once again for his Earth Day Road cleanup. I think we had, what, one side of thirty people there, approaching thirty people. Yeah, it's a real, real service to the village. Thank you. And I would, anybody listening tonight in the audience, I would put out a caution. Don't ever challenge our village attorney to a trash pickup. He's a machine out there. Uh, more comments about the mini excavator. It's here as you can assume by now, but I went over and sat in it.
That's what my files in it all.
I think you should charge five bucks on it. Talking about modern piece of equipment. Felt like I was in the cockpit again. But I also, looking at that piece of machinery, it's gonna save the village a ton of money down the road, so. Um, that's all I have to report. Anything else?
Alright, thank you, Ed. Uh, Finance, Mr. Thornton?
I think since we already talked about the appropriation ordinance, I have no report.
Alright, thank you, Mark. Uh, Water Insurance, Bow?
Uh, I had a resident up on Jamestown Court up in Deer Creek reach out to me again. Uh, they reached out to me a year ago as well with the big rains coming in off of Randall and then the construction and with, uh, Randy's no longer being up there, they're just getting a deluge of water coming through the what was it called again? The box?
Uh, catch basin.
Catch basin. Um, and so, they're having it again. I talked to Kyle, I'm gonna talk to Jeff to see if we can reach out to Elgin and the county just to find out from their end if we can actually get it looked at. We just surmised last year that there might have been some drainage blocks and we're gonna try and work on that. I just wanna see if there's actually something blocking it up there now, because it's on their side of this, the border. Um, and to see if we can fix it that way. And if there's nothing there, then we start looking at some alternatives maybe looking at water-based plants, if it's just gonna be something we have to accept with all the expansion up there or I see from there. I understand about, I think it was two thousand and eighteen that we had swell work done up on Jamestown Court.
Like, two thousand and twelve.
Oh, two thousand and twelve, yeah, that's some, twelve, fourteen years ago.
Yeah, and then two thousand and eighteen, we met with, uh.
Oh, met with the guy, yes, yeah.
Didn't you get Elgin to do something on the other side of the road too?
I don't.
Uh, that goes back to Mr. Rosanka.
Yeah.
When the development was first started, he negotiated a discharge rate lower than the maximum allowed by, uh, the stormwater people. So, Elgin typed up their release on that. So.
It may just be something that's.
It might be. I mean, there was one time we found a piece of plywood over the, uh, exit or the drainage joint, uh, uh, what was it, tilted kilt over there, there's a tension pole? And they had put a piece of plywood to keep the water higher. So, you know, that was an issue a long time.
She did.
Uh, the big issue though was, yeah, was it two thousand and twelve?
Yeah, we put the camera in, uh, yeah, it's about two thousand and twelve.
But yeah, that's, the engineering over that discharge has been gone over two or three times.
Okay.
Well, because of the drainage up there. Uh, but, you know, two thousand and twelve was, we finally put a camera in the pipe up there and found that there was a fourteen-inch stone and a sixteen-inch pipe. And wow. Gee, wonder how that happened? But, uh, that required having to dig up, that had been there from the day of installation. There's no way that could have dissolved into that system. So, that had been put in ground originally by some mischief. We took that out and it's resolved a lot of the issues out there that.
Yeah, we reswaled the swell there. Um, I guess the only thing that we could talk to Elgin about was say, since, since and they, Randy's gone, they built Honda, uh, Mazda and you know, they, they have more, more concrete to catch all the water and the the catch, the stormwater catch basin's the same size. It increased in size, so I don't, I don't know if we can do anything or not.
See, take a little gander. It's been a while. I said, they might have a problem on their side.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know?
That's all.
Alright, okay, and thank you, Courtney. Moving on to Police Public Safety, Mr. Deatley.
Uh, yeah, a couple things tonight. Um, just for educational purposes and just to get it out there, get information out there so you can, uh, have it in the front of our minds. Uh, the current activity report, I'll let you browse that for your own viewing pleasure. Um, the other thing we're gonna talk about a little bit is the license plate readers that we had mentioned at a previous meeting uh, and how these are really helping law enforcement. Uh, what they are is they're a license plate reader that goes at the entrance, uh, every entrance of the village. When you come into the village, it reads your license plate. It tells then if there is a problem, it tells, it notifies the police department automatically that there is a warrant or a warrant out on this plate, if it's stolen, if it's, whatever it may be. Uh, suspended registration or whatever. Um, this has been a big, uh, bonus for police departments because it helps you give you eyes and ears, uh, in places that you can't be all the time. Um, Chief met with, uh, Flock Safety, uh, who is the manufacturer of this particular system. Um, Chief, I'll let you go ahead and speak a little bit about it since you met with your.
Okay, um, so just one clarification, it, it, the cameras won't read like suspended licenses, suspended license plates, things like that. Um, the, the system works off the state hot list, so something has to be entered into that system to be read by the cameras. So, if there's no problem with your plates, there's no issues with your plate being stolen, your car being wired or you being wired, you're invisible to the cameras essentially, because I know there's some, there's always some concerns about that. Um, so what we did is I sat down with Flock and we looked at this, the, the estimate that they gave us is high in the sky. Every possible way that you would come into town, how we monitor that. Um, so that's the most expensive that would, that it would be for us. Um, I can tell you, but I had experienced where I came from, we put block cameras and we put fifty-three of them in. Um, substantially more expensive, uh, but within the first month of having them, well, we had cars that were wired in residential burglaries that we were able to stop people before they even got out of the subdivisions. Some we hit with stop sticks, flattened their tires and made arrests. So, um, they, they, the way I look at these types of cameras, a police officer costs us X amount of dollars a year between, you know, salary, benefits and everything. Uh, these camera systems, you could get four of them for what you hire an officer for essentially, and they don't take days off. They don't, you don't have to worry about workman's comp, they won't take seconds. It's those type of things. And so we've got an officer that's working by themselves, which a lot of times it does happen with our officers, and they're on, they happen to be on the west side of town or east side of town and the camera goes off on the west side of town, the officer can start heading that direction, they get a little bit of a heads up. Um, so a huge benefit, uh, to the village. It is an expense, um, but I think it's something trustee Deatley, we started talking about this a while ago, um, and Flock is willing and more than willing to come out. They have a team that comes out and will do presentations to boards, answer any questions that any of the board members would have, any of the citizens would have. Um, so they're willing and able to do that. I said, well, let me, before we set something like that up, let's see what kind of appetite the village has first and that's an avenue we wanna go down. They'll be glad to come out and I'll, I'll be glad to set that up. So, they can come out and answer all, any questions that anybody would have. So.
We'll be informed then.
Yeah, what you do.
I think I think it would put some of the residents, it needs some things that calls that we all get and you get and.
That's the biggest, it's the biggest fear to overcome with these types of systems is the, the big brother, quote unquote, big brother watching questions and that, that comes out. It's, it's natural. I do, I do understand it. Um, but it's, it's definitely not the case with these systems. So, yeah, I'd be glad to set it up. You guys let me know when you're looking at and I'll, I'll reach out to, to Flock and set it up.
I'm getting ahead of it, but where are the cameras mounted?
So, they mount them on, if you have a light pole sturdy in place, uh, an example would be, um, going into River Ridge off Blankowski. Um, there's already a light pole there, so they can mount it right on that light pole. Uh, if you get anybody basically coming in. Anywhere else, we would have to put a light pole up. So, in that situation, we'd save, I think it's five hundred bucks because we already have a pole. Um, they're solar operated. The nice thing is the camera system is, you don't own it. It's basically a leased system. So, if a camera goes down, we call Flock, they come out, put a new camera up, take the old one down, you're done. There's, there's no maintenance on our end to do this. So, our, our costs are pretty much what you see in the, in the estimates.
So, is that something everybody would like to get a little more information on and?
I'd like some more information. I have some strong reservations. Um, I started researching it a little bit and I'm just, I'd like to know a lot more than just what we were able to get from the quote and what I've been able to find online and just kind of, mostly I'm concerned about who, who retains the data that's taken from the video. What's the span of the data? How long, how long do they retain it? Like, some of the contracts I saw were for thirty days, some were for three minutes. Um, I'd like to also know how much we can negotiate on the contract with them for what their criteria is and what we want to represent. Um, and I would just, I think when you first hear about, and I remember the chief and I spoke about it probably about six months ago, I just wanted to learn more about the village and the police and how they interact. I certainly understand the appeal of it. Um, the more I read into it, I'm just, I definitely have the big brother curiosity and hesitations. And I would just encourage everybody to look up the pros and the cons of it and kind of gauge what the village wants and how many entrances we have, what areas it would affect. And, yeah, so I'm interested in the, in the information, definitely.
Absolutely.
Would that presentation be at a board meeting or at a?
They, they would be willing to do it at a board meeting if you wanted to set a special meeting to have them come in, which is probably what I would suggest. Just set up a meeting so that they can come in and, and do a presentation to, to, to you guys and, and you can invite citizens as well to, to ask questions. That would probably be the best way of doing it. And that way, nobody gets accused of any smoking mirrors. Uh, you know, everybody knows me, I'm above laying it all out there, let's just, let's put it out there and, and be transparent and that's the best way to do it, in my opinion.
Uh, schedule a special meeting of the board? Sometime the next month or so?
I can reach out to them tomorrow and say, what availability do you have? And then I can send out an email with, uh, some available dates and, and you guys just tell me.
Or you wanna just give them an eight o'clock presentation in the twentieth?
We can.
Just put them on the calendar.
If they're available.
Yes. You know it that way? Okay.
What day is it?
See it there?
What day is it?
That's. Oh, thanks.
That's the negative voice.
Oh, yeah.
Give them a half hour, I think that would.
Let me, let me find out from them how long they think they need. I mean, they've done this numerous times, so they'll have a better feel for it. Um, and we find out what kind of time they're looking at and I can I can let them know that that's the date there that you guys are thinking of on.
Sure.
I'll reach out tomorrow.
On that note, just physically, I have to this quickly, do we have money in the budget that we've set aside in, in anticipation of this, or is this something that we're looking to turn on in the next month or?
We put money in the five-year cap for it, um, just a, 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 a figure. Um, and it was close to this amount. So, it's, it's, it's definitely in the quote-unquote budget in terms of five-year cap that we.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for that. Uh, one other thing, um, in previous board meetings, um, the chief and I have been talking, you know, about how we keep police officers and this and that and what we're looking at as far as, uh, you know, we will be in contract negotiations with the police again in another year from twenty twenty-three. Um, so we always look at, you know, some patients is a big thing that's out there. So, the chief did a little research on what it takes to train an officer when you get one in, uh, and you'll see that in the report. Basically, to get a new officer in and train them, it costs five thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. Um, now, chief went back all the way to nineteen seventy-one, couldn't find data back any further than that. Uh, it's probably up there, but probably the mics probably ate it or something. But, uh, you know, approximately, you know, right now with the turnover in police officers, and this is a kind of a interesting figure, since nineteen seventy-one, we have turned over two hundred and eight police officers. Now, I know that's a long span of time, but that's a lot of officers as well. And a lot of that is because we cannot offer certain things. We cannot offer pensions and this and that. But what I come back to, and chief and I have had some conversations, we're still spending the money because we're paying people. We're training all these people, we're doing all this. So, we. We're training all these people, we're doing all this. So we have to look at ways we can get from that. So I wanted to share these figures with you. You know, just so you have it for background knowledge. You know, as we move forward and get into the next round of contract negotiations. Chief, you want to add to that?
No, I, I, I searched the attic. I literally searched the attic, looked for anything before nineteen seventy-one. There's some speculation that some of those files may have been stored offsite during a move or something and they, we don't know where they went. And I have no idea how many officers were hired before that. I can tell you in that same span of time where I came from, you could probably, I conservatively say that we went through twenty-five officers in that same nineteen seventy-one to, to this period. And that number would probably be pretty comparable to a lot of other villages. So my feeling on the business and the reason that everybody wanted me to do this is to kind of see how much money we've spent in the past. And also, in the end, I think the residents deserve to have officers that they recognize. And I can't tell you how many people I have conversations with that say, when did you hire that guy? When did you? It's, it's just, now, we're doing a disservice, I think, to our residents. They should know who their officers are. The officers should be invested in the community as well because then they, they feel that connection. I think that's really important, especially in a small town.
Are you still planning on having like a meeting greet?
But it's good food for thought. I just wanted to share that information. And I thank chief for pulling that together and doing a lot of that research on that. So hopefully gives us some input and insight into the things to be moved forward with that.
If I could just tag on to that real quick, I know earlier this year I mentioned looking into the village, joining the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. That process is still on hold. The IMRF suffered a major catastrophe with their computer system. And at this point, there are members of the IMRF that would like to retire and can't get their checks. So I thought we would let those people get their problems taken care of first. And then I would come out and say, hey, we'd like to, you know. But it's been going on for about five or six weeks now. Even our auditors have advised, just sit patiently and wait for them to waste, we don't have anybody in the mix that's trying to get their retirement.
Yeah, exactly.
The one to know that that had not been forgotten. Thank you much, so. Okay.
That is it.
That's it. All right, thank you, Steve. Thank you, chief. And the next item on there is building and environment. This is required. She's absent this evening. So the next one is building and zoning.
I can say a few things, a few residents have contacted me about certain things. One, I talked to Jeff and yourself, Mr. President, that we're gonna address. And then another resident I talked to called me. Steve, you're probably familiar with this more, up, up on Tim, not Timber. Where they built that house with the noisy.
Swamp?
Yeah.
Aren't they the septic system?
Yeah. So. And a few of the neighbors contacted me. I went out there. I had told them that I would connect with Barb regarding what.
Stand down at that maw for the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Schuster has contacted the contractor.
Okay. But, all right, because I, when I went out there, I thought, all right, I'll go up and listen to it. It is.
They, they've stretched it to the point now, yeah. It should have been resolved last fall.
Planes going over with the birds and everything. It was loud. I, I get where they're frustrated. So, okay, that's good to know. Let them know.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Uh, thank you, Kelly. And that's it for a trustee report this evening. All business. Ordinance. We need to.
This is really new business.
I was gonna say, it should be new business.
Uh, the clerk and I had a communication problem, I think.
I'm not suggesting you were at fault. Someone who may have been at fault is not in the, that's not in the.
I'm not talking about fault. This is a, this is an item, this ordinance addresses an item that the chief and I have been looking into. And apparently, there are more instances of fleeing and eluding than you might think. People do try to avoid the consequences of their poor driving. And state law allows, would allow for aggravated circumstantial which would be, for example, speeding away at more than twenty-one miles over the limit for a forfeiture of the vehicle. The same law allows the village to seize an impound or tow the car from the scene. The, the problem is that your police department and many police departments break off, they, they don't, they don't speed, they don't chase someone to a conclusion. And, and so with the technology today, though, they may capture the identity of the vehicle, the registration plate, or even a picture of the driver. But they don't tow the car because they don't pursue it to wherever it's headed. And the issue then becomes under what circumstances could you in the future actually seize that vehicle? Not so much for forfeiture purposes, but the same way that if you're driving on a suspended license or a DUI or after a theft or something, that your car can be towed. We haven't really resolved all those issues. So you, you have a draft ordinance so that you're aware that it's being looked at and considered. If there's a way, and in fact, there are some Illinois municipalities that have enacted an ordinance of this type. I have reservations and I have not been able to resolve those law yet. So it's, it's there. Please read it. And there may be more on that going forward. The other item that is all business is the administrative adjudication system. And you will be receiving a, a copy of that. We had hoped to have it on this agenda and at least, again, to start a discussion of what that entails. As you know, the chief planned for and now has conducted a community meeting about that. He can report on that if you have questions. But I, I want you to see the somewhat extensive text that goes into setting up that system. So that when it comes up for a vote, you, they all had a chance to read and review it. So the village clerk will be forwarding that over to you in a day or two.
Post haste.
Post haste. And tentatively, I think, the, the chief has said that we don't, hope to launch on July first. So there's a little bit of time yet to, to consider that and look at it. But it, Sleepy Hollow is not inventing a new procedure or system here. Every community around here has this in place, more or less. I serve as a hearing officer for five different communities in northeastern Illinois myself. So it's a way to handle local things for lesser fines in a more convenient place, be it village hall instead of a court in Kane County. But at the same time, it allows the village to keep after things that need mending. Need, need correction. And that's why it's gained so much popularity. Because it, it accomplishes those, those goals and people seem to react better to it. So take a look at that when you get it and that will be all business and upcoming agenda.
Okay. That it?
That's it.
Thank you, Mark, for the chip. Okay, the next item of new business is the approval of the street sign purchase float. Not just the last of it?
Is it?
What was that, three years, four years?
Five.
Five years. Right. Okay. Uh, see, I've got five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents?
Yep.
That's it?
That's it.
That's the post and the signs and all their hardware?
Yep.
Interesting. We pay more for the post than we do anything else.
We wanted a powder coated black.
I know, I know. I was surprised. But they do look better. All right, that is what we need is a motion to approve the purchase of the remaining road, street signs and posts, amount of four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Seconded.
Moved by Hardy, seconded by Thor. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, no motion. So curious, thank you all. Any other new business to come before the board?
I move to adjourn.
Second to the LA.
Move and second, all fair, since by last day night.
Aye.
No opposed? We are adjourned.